We'll call this meeting the Common Council of Order. We'll call please.
Over and by her. Here, Niles.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
This conference will now be recorded.
Young.
Here.
Horn.
At this time, we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll move on to number three, a presentation of the Library 2020 Year Review. And welcome Library Director, Melissa Anderson.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for letting me come and talk to you about all the fun and great things that we did in 2020 at the library. And so I just kind of want to just talk about some of our highlights instead of just throwing numbers at you. I thought I would kind of showcase the different things that we were doing throughout the year. So in your packet, this is just our infographic that kind of highlights, you know, our numbers of what we did throughout the year. And, you know, we, you know, how many people came to the library, you know, over 18,000? How many items were checked out, whether it was print or media or digital resources? And then how many times the Wi-Fi was accessed? I think that is just astonishing, the number of times, you know, in the past year that our Wi-Fi was accessed, you know, almost 17,000 times. And so that includes people that are in the building and outside the building because our Wi-Fi access point, people can access it all the way around the building. So here's our, the infographic is kind of a snapshot, but I put together a PowerPoint that shows, you know, what we were doing in 2020. So we were stepping up in 2020, kind of a year in review. And, you know, a public library, it helps the community in kind of three basic ways. It helps people learn different things. They can explore topics and new hobbies or new subject matters or, you know, skills. And then it also connects people. So people who come to the library, they like that connection of with the staff or with other patrons and in the programming. So they like the connection too. So the library, you know, is more than just books, you know, the way it used to be. So we help people learn, explore, and connect. So last year, if we put a dollar value on all the items and all the materials that the people of this community, Jefferson and surrounding areas, on what they checked out, whether it was all the print materials, whether it was books or DVDs or video games, magazines, anything they checked out, it would have come to $1,311,076.23. So, you know, as a library, you know, we're saving the community money by providing these services and we're good stewards of our, you know, our budget money by providing material and equipment that the public wants. And then you look at our numbers, you know, we had over 63,000 items that were checked out. That was print, media, or audio. And then we had almost 13,000 of digital resources that were used. And that includes our eBooks, the electronic books that you can check out through OverDrive, which is available through the Wisconsin State Digital Library. So we're a member of all the libraries within the state of Wisconsin. And you can get eBooks, you can get audiobooks. And then we also, within Bridges, we offer something called Hoopla, where people can check out movies. They can kind of rent or stream movies, TV shows, books. And that's where the movies, music, and TV shows come from, is the service that we provide within our system called Hoopla. So those are some of the numbers that we provided for the year. And last year, we had 18,608 people come to the library. And we have, you know, over 6,000 active cardholders who come to the library and they're using the library. And then last year alone, we had 244 new people who came and got a new card within the library. So they were either just a new person to the library or maybe they moved into the area. And that was one of the first things that they did was come to the library and get their library card because now they're a new person in the area. And then technology reference, library staff is there. We help people on many different levels of technology and reference. And like I said, our Wi-Fi usage is extremely high. And then our computer usage, that's people who come in because they don't have a computer at home or they don't have internet connection and they need to come in and print an application for a job or something from, you know, their health insurance. And they're having to submit their medical receipts to get their HSA reimbursement. You know, so if, and then some people who just want to come and connect with their family through emails or Facebook. So we have, you know, almost 4,000 times people came in last year, even with COVID. So people were still coming in. And then our technology and reference help. That's where we've had people call and they hand us their iPhone or their Kindle or they come with their laptop and they say, I don't know how to do OverDrive. Can you show me how to do OverDrive? And we helped them get it set up. And now they can start checking out items out of the digital resource library. So, or it's a phone call and they're asking for help, in which we did a lot of, in that short window that we were closed, we took a lot of phone calls of people needing help, setting up their OverDrive accounts, setting up Hoopla, and just needing that walkthrough. And it's not easy to do that over the phone, but our staff did a great job doing that. So. Some of the things that we did in 2020, because we had to be flexible, we had to adapt, and we had to do things differently. One thing that we implemented right away was our no-contact pickup. And people still today take advantage of it, even though our doors are open. There are still some people who like that service. So they take advantage of that. You know, our youth department created a story walk and they put it outside the library where families could come and read the story walk, you know, outside. And we've created personalized book bundles or readers' reference, you know, people would submit maybe an application or some questionnaire. And then we would put together, you know, a collection of books for them to check out. And then we offered virtual programs, a wide variety of storytime. We offered homeschool storytime and different crafting programs or showcasing some of our STEAM kits. So we had a variety of programs that we offered. And then on the digital side, we offered online reference help. We offered digital library cards, which, you know, we were closed and people didn't have a library card and they couldn't come in and get one. But what they could do is they could sign on online and get a digital library card and now have access to reserving items to come pick them up through no contact pickup or checking out digital materials through our OverDrive, Libby, or Hoopla. And then once we got open in June, you know, they were coming in, they could get their hard card and then they're set and ready to go. So that was something extra that we were able to do for people who were stuck at home and they didn't have a card. And then we also have, within our system Bridges, we were able to purchase a homework help now for anybody and it's from all ages, from children through adults. And it's tutorial services, it's, you know, essay writing help, resume looking over. So it runs the gamut on what it can do and then every subject. And it's personalized help. It's not just something on the computer and it's just some game or whatever. They actually can make contact with a live tutor and have that one-on-one experience with them. And then we offered our, we still, you know, our mobile hotspots. They were never on the shelf. They were constantly checked out because people were homeschooling their kids and they, or they still are, or they're working from home and their internet is spotty where they live, or they don't have internet. And so the hotspots are checked out constantly. And that is one of our most popular items to check out.
How many of those do you have?
Right now, we have, we have eight. And they're never on the shelf. We could double that and they'd still never be on the shelf. So the thing is, they're super inexpensive to buy the device, but it's the annual service that, you know, is a little more on the high-end price.
Do the public schools supply that to kids? Do you know?
No.
They don't?
No. They provide the device, but not the internet connection. And, you know, I know they did their best with providing the opportunity for families who were, who didn't have internet at home, you know, so everyone was virtually at home. But those families who did not have the internet connection, they kind of rethought their day of classroom and they put the students in the gym or in the big cafeteria and they spread them out. And they were able to assist those people. And then we opened this room as well and set up two or three tables for anybody who wanted to come to have access to our Wi-Fi, who needed it for schooling or, so we were open as well to help those families, you know, to have that connection. So it was very difficult to do school if you didn't have internet. So we found ourselves kind of supplementing, filling in the gaps and, you know, filling in the cracks where the schools weren't quite 100%, but we could help them, you know, in this area. Families at home, you know, needing extra books. So we were able to give them a stack of books, you know, like our reading reference, our book bundles. They'd give us a topic and we'd put together, you know, a set of how many books they wanted. They'd come and get them. That would supplement their curriculum at home. And then in the summer, you know, everything happened so quickly. And our staff had to change gears and just change the way we were going to do summer reading. And so they had to rethink summer reading. And some of the things that we did was, you know, we still offered the paper logs because people still liked the paper. But we had access to a digital app. The state of Wisconsin, through DPI, purchased an app called BeanStack. And it was available to all the libraries within Wisconsin. And what it was is, it was a mobile app that we could personalize to our library program. And families could sign up and track and do everything on the mobile app. And still be able to participate in the summer reading program. You know, and then we offered our virtual programming. We had our take-inmates that families could come and take and then go home and do them. And then we also had our fun and exciting incentives because we still had our community partners, sponsorships within the town that gave us coupons and money for prizes and to help pay for, you know, programs and our virtual programming. And there's a little graph about, you know, the number of minutes that were read by the per age group. And it was less than what we would normally have in our normal summer. But it was those who did participate participated, you know, full-heartedly and they benefited from what we were able to offer them. So throughout the year, some of our virtual programming, we focused, you know, on early literacy. We had storytime. And then we had guest storytime readers. We had chief, clergy, and then we had mayor. Mayor Altman come a couple, one time, each came one time. And they did an awesome job, by the way. And then we had fun entertainment programs where we had a comedy act kids play. And then we had Duke Epiphanesia over the winter holiday. We had some educational programs. There was one for named Colossal Fossils. And they did them in a series. And each one kind of focused on a different type of dinosaur. And then we kind of did an in-house one where you're creating your own family tree. So the kids are taking this family tree and they're going home and they're researching, you know, who their grandparents are, who their great-grandparents are. And so they're doing that activity with their parents. And then to kind of reach the adults, you know, it has to be something different. We'll have book clubs and we were doing that online as well. So we provide the books and then the opportunity to discuss and talk about the books. And there's that connection again that people are looking for during any time, basically. And then we offered some fun things to do at home. So we had, you know, activities for kids and adults and crafts that both kids and adults could do. One thing that's really popular this year, and we just got it up and running at the beginning of the year through a grant from Tyson's, was our STEAM kits. And we have around 30 STEAM kits. And so families can come and check out anything on science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And then we have them in three different age groups. And so that's a picture of a family. And they come in every week and they check out a different one. And I went down today and I was looking at the shelf and I saw all these holes. And I was like, I like seeing that empty because that means that families are taking them home and they're using them. And then we had different, you know, things that people can take to go and then do them at home. And then we had crafts throughout the year that are very popular. People are just looking for that kind of tactile experience where here's all, anything you need, now you can go and make it yourself. So we offered the Reader's Advisory and Book Bundles, our personalized Reader's Advisory where for both kids and adults, where they fill out a short form. And then we provide them with, you know, a little stack of books. Our teacher bundles, we have teachers who put in a monthly request that follows their curriculum. And we put together a stack of books based on how many they want. Do they want 30? Do they want 50? And that's a picture of one of the bundles that's sitting in a classroom. And then we have our Storytime in a bag. This one was really popular. We kind of rethought, how do we do storytime? The families aren't coming in and the kids, they're not bringing in their kids. So how can we bring storytime to them? So we put together the Storytime in the bag. So it has the books and it has a little handout that has the songs. And then it has the craft that they can do. And then, so we've cycled through, we've done three series of those, I think of 12 each. And each time, they're always checked out because the families, they come in every week and they get their storytime in a bag. So they can go home and do it. And the next week, they come and get the next one. So those are some of the examples how, you know, we had to maybe rethink, how can we reach the community? And we've gotten good response towards that. And then throughout the year, you know, we've never, we never forgot our community partnerships. So in the summer, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce. And for the adults, with the J-stops, we created kind of a scavenger hunt where, and Suzanne Blair, she was one of our recent retirees, she created a scavenger hunt that you would go, so a person would walk from J-stop to J-stop, read the question, read the J-stop and kind of answer what was missing or what the question was. And then that was some of the, that was her participation for part of the summer reading program. At the beginning of the year, we had the North, Milwaukee Northwestern Model Railroad Club come in. And that one was huge. It was massive. We had so many families and so many kids come and look at that. And then the Friends of the Jackson Public Library, they are always so helpful for us and helping to raise money and just supporting us with different projects. And, for example, our hotspots, they pay for our annual service for the hotspots. And they've done that, I think, pretty much ever since we've gotten them. So it's about $1,200 a year to help cover the annual service for the hotspot. So they're a very important part of our, of our community partnership here. And then with the Kiwanis Club of Jefferson, we have different connections with them. But for a couple of years now, we've always done kind of a Kiwanis closet and where we offer free coats, hats, socks, gloves. And it kind of evolves every year. And right now, it's out at our foyer in the front entrance. And I have a coat rack and it has the drawers where you can dig through and find the socks. And then we have blankets. And that one, you'd be amazed at how fast those items cycle through. So that is another partnership that we have built over the years. And then if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. But, you know, we were able to keep moving and keep our doors open and serve the community. And we're ready to do it again in 2021. But I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any. If not, I appreciate your time and have a good evening.
Thank you.
I got one for you.
Yes.
So these numbers here in 2020?
Yeah.
How did it generally compare to what the 2019 numbers were saying?
If I looked at the numbers, okay, so if I look at 2020 and I look at 2019, and then I compare that to the number of hours that we would have, we were open in 2019, the number of hours we're open in 2020, are, we are, we were closed of just under 25%. You know, we're, it's kind of depends on which numbers, but I'd just say 25%. So we're 25% less hours. And that includes the two and a half months that we were closed due to the Safer Home and then our modified hours currently right now. So then if you look at the numbers, our numbers are 25% less than what they were in 2019. So to me, that's a direct correlation to the amount of time that we're open. And that even though we were closed and maybe were an hour less each day, we're still serving the same amount and the kind of, it was a good question.
Great job. We really appreciate everything that you and your staff have done this year. It's been an exemplary job in a very tough year. And it was just great to see that our library was open as often as it was.
Yes. Yeah. And it was our pleasure, you know, we really enjoyed it. And I think our patrons in the community really appreciated us being open. And, you know, we'd get the comments here and there. And my favorite one is, right when we opened in June 1st, the lady came in and she says, you know, I knew I loved the library, but I didn't know I was in love with the library. She goes, thank you for opening back up. You know, so that's one of my favorite ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to a presentation in the Park and Recreation Department, the 2020 Year Review from Director Cindy Kellers and Chad Wood. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. We're going to make this pretty quick. I think in your packets, you each got a, this was online, in your council packets, just kind of our year in highlights. And, you know, same thing as that the library had to say is it was a year of change for all of us. And we had to kind of rethink a few things. But some things stayed the same as well. So, you know, we found that we were still taking down trees, we're still making, maintaining ball diamonds, we still had some park shelter rentals, things like that. We still had a lot of our rec programs, although they looked a little different. But what we did find throughout all of this is that, one, we're getting pretty good at thinking on our feet. So, and having to figure out how can we stay relevant in the community. And what we found is, with the Safer Home order when it first came, is our parks were busy. We had people in them all over, walking. They were out on the trails. They were using the playgrounds. And that's exactly what we wanted. You know, for us, we were like, yes, this is great. Come out and see us. So that was kind of good for us. I'm going to let Chad kind of talk a little bit about some of the highlights that we had in our rec department.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. As Cindy said, you know, 2020 was challenging. I think we had a conversation early on in the pandemic that with our amount of experience combined, nobody in the profession in the last, oh, 40, the 45 years has ever seen anything like this before. So as you can imagine, we were trying to resource and network with as many agencies throughout the state as we could, and even on a national level, to try to find best practices or ways to combat, you know, the global pandemic. And it was challenging. I'll be completely honest with you. It was challenging and it pushed us to question our policies, our procedures, even some of our theories that we have hold true for quite some time that we've known over the years. But at the same time, it reinvigorated us to some extent to really get back to the brass tacks of it is, what does the community need? What does the community want? I know throughout the course of the pandemic, we've twice successfully surveyed the community and asked them, what are their expectations of us? What are they looking for us to do for them? It's easy to put a gold star on every successful program, but quite honestly, that's what our job is, is to do programming and to provide an outlet for the community. So like Cindy said, our parks were busy. We webbed that robust park system here in the city to its fullest extent. And we continue, will continue to do that in 2021 with some of our upcoming programming plans. In your, it's in your packet that Sarah sent out, not in the brochure that you guys were given. But obviously, we continued, we had a very robust sponsorship program that went out just before the turn of the year and before the pandemic really got started. And what was a saving grace to our budget and to our program and to the community members was the very gracious support of somewhere around 15 businesses that sponsored programming before the pandemic actually hit. Those programs that we were able to offer were supported through those dollars. And programs that we weren't able to offer, we worked with those businesses and moved them, moved those sponsorship dollars to areas where it fit the most and made the most sense. So like the DIY bags that we offered over 14 weeks of the summer is monies that were already allocated that got moved into a different purpose. So it wasn't an extra cost to our budget. It was just repurposing exactly what it is that we were trying to do. And in that process, eight new programs were created. More of it was passive recreation than actual in-person stuff. So if you're on Facebook, you probably see my face a lot these days. That's how we engage with the community, encouraging them to do stuff at home, to find ways to appreciate the simplicity of going outside and playing catch, using their imagination to create a play that's stimulating. For the programs that we did have and that we did offer, youth athletics and adult fitness and aquatics were the three most popular based on participation. Lee Fraley specifically was quoted as complimentary of our Park Fit classes, which was, again, how we levied our system to be able to offer a safe fitness environment for people to be active. And I think that is where the key was. We're not out of the woods yet. I think we all know where the pandemic is right now. And we suspect that a major trend for 2021 is our park system will be used unlike anything we've seen in the last 10 to 15 years. It's free. It's safe. Or the perception of safety is there. It's also equitable. And it also provides great opportunity for inclusion. And so we're hoping in 2021 to really levy that even more than what we are currently. You've seen some pictures of some of the projects that we were able to accomplish. Obviously, the pool replaster was a big one. The community was beyond elated to see that the bottom of the pool got done. Their feet probably appreciated a little bit too. But obviously, Rock River Landing, that's going to be online this coming year. Again, will be a huge piece to us. And then upgrading our current infrastructure with things like scoreboards and other things that had gone on for a while that now are starting to get replaced over time. So we're really proud with some of that. And I know in our capital budget for 2021, we have some continued improvements that will be coming along.
And then just to finish up, we gave you each a copy of our summer brochure. You noticed that we printed it on the copier because this is the first year in my entire time being here that we have never actually sent, that we didn't send this out to a printer. So this year, we went completely virtual. We have links on our Facebook page. We have links on our, on the city website as well. So that's a little difference for us. The other thing is that we've had, all of our programs are in, have been inputted into our recreation software, which is an amazing thing for us. This is the first year we are able to allow people to purchase pool passes online, which will give them the opportunity to pay with them with a credit card versus having to come in with a check, things like that. So we've never been able to do that. And we're hoping to kind of make some of our other stuff as well. But the one thing that we do see with this brochure that we're pretty excited about, because we're doing it online, it's in four colors. We could never afford to do a four-color brochure. So we were able to do a lot of neat, interesting things, uncatching with it. We've got some brand new programs coming out that we're kind of working on. So we're pretty excited about this. I don't know if you want to give a quick spin on a couple new ones?
Yeah, a couple ones that we're excited about or ones that I'm excited about is our recreational tree climbing class, something that's never been offered here in the county before. Working with an certified arborist, he came out, we trekked through lots of snow and found the perfect tree at riverfront where he will, he will set up, climb the ropes and safety equipment. And kids will have an opportunity to safely recreationally climb a tree in the park. And if you can imagine, getting 10, 15 feet off the ground, while scary for some. And if you can imagine getting 10 to 15 feet off the ground, well scary for some. I don't like heights. But, but for some people, getting higher off the ground, it's an eyesight thing. And being able to overlook a park or being able to overlook the landscape of Jefferson is a view most kids in the community don't get on a regular basis. So we're excited about that. We also just recently embarked on a statewide challenge that is titled the B Act of Wisconsin. And it's a very simple challenge that is encouraging people to get out and be active, especially as the winter blues are coming to the end and cabin fever is still there. We're encouraging people, as nice weather permits, to get out and be active and think about an active lifestyle. What's unique about this is it ties in or it is represented in over 40 communities across the state. We have communities as large as Green Bay, Appleton, and we have communities as small as, I know, I don't think Altoona is quite as big as some of the bigger ones. But you have some other small park and rec agencies. Right now the total is over 1,000 people across the state. And Jefferson has 38 of those, 38 of those people that are represented in the challenge. So we have that. But more importantly, throughout the course of 2020, you know, we anecdotally saw that we did make a positive impact with the stuff that we have now. What we've been looking to do is take what we have and refine it and make it better. So as you're paging through, you'll see some of the regular things that we offer, the swim lessons, the baseball. All those things are still there. What we're trying to increase or enhance are things like movie in the park. Movies in the park was actually popular. My first year, we had maybe a total of 35 people over the course of three movies. Last year for three movies, we had 150 people participate. So we're seeing this upward trend in some of these community-based programs that people pay attention, take notice and participate in, which is what we want.
And one thing with the movies in the park is because our sponsors have been so amazing, we're able to offer an additional fourth movie, which we weren't able to do. So those kind of things are kind of good, you know, we greatly appreciate that.
A lot, a lot, a lot of what we're able to do and what we're able to improve is, is by and large because of the support of the business community in Jefferson. We cannot do what we have been able to do without them. So we appreciate that and do our best to encourage people to shop logo and, and things as such. But I'll let you guys read the remaining of the information. But as Cindy said, we touched on, you know, the forestry component and the trees. And it was, it was a challenge, but 2020, you know, we were pleased with, with the outcome. We're excited and I think we're reinvigorated a little bit to what 2021 has to offer. So.
We've got some new programs on the horizon that we're working on that we're not ready to bring out to the public yet. But we've got some really cool things that are going to be happening. So, and hopefully some additional grand dollars too. That's all we've got. So thank you very much for your time. We do greatly appreciate it. So.
Thank you. Is there any, any questions?
Cindy, let me answer these. I've got 10 more to work.
Sure. I can answer. And I misspoke. I said we had four movies, but we actually have five. So I'm still nervous there.
At this time, we'll adjourn to a public hearing to discuss an ordinance to amend section 300-19B of the municipal code of the city of Jefferson. Related to rezoning is amended to change district boundaries of 752 North Dewey Avenue from AG Agricultural District to the zoning designation to R1 Multi-Family Residential District. I'll call this public hearing to order and ask for the reading of the notice of public hearing.
Notice is given that the common council of the city of Jefferson will hold a public hearing in the council chambers of the Jefferson City Hall, 317 South Main Street, Jefferson, Wisconsin, on 2 March 2021 at 7:00 PM to hear the following rezoning request for zoning change of 352 North Dewey Avenue from AG Agricultural District to the zoning designation of R-1 Single Family Residential District. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing. The notice was published in the Daily Union on 16 February and again on 23 February 2021.
Thank you. Now could you give the explanation of the public hearing, please?
Well, I think it's very simply this property is part of a farm. Through the process of putting a new certified survey map in place, they are personally off what we would think of as the farmstead, rezoning that to residential, leaving the rest of the farm agricultural.
Thank you, Tim. Any persons wishing to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address and reason for appearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to ordinance number 2-21 and ordinance to amend section 300-19B of the municipal code of the city of Jefferson. Related to rezoning is amended to change district boundaries of 752 North Dewey Avenue from AG Agricultural District to the zoning designation of R1 Multi-Family Residential District. Hold them in hours, please.
Thank you. I'm mayor of all council members, citizens of Jefferson, city of Jefferson, ordinance number 2-21. The common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin do ordains as follows. Section 1, section 300-19B of the zoning map city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which is herein made a part of, is amended to change district boundaries of 752 North Dewey Avenue from AG Agricultural District to the zoning designation of R-1 Multi-Family Residential District. Description is on file. Partial number is 241-0614-0123-000. Address is 752 North Dewey Avenue. Proposed permanent zoning designation, R-1 Multi-Family Residential District. Section 2, the ordinance shall take effect and be in full force after pass, passage and publication as provided by law and notification and anticipation of the district boundaries changes incorporated herein. The zoning map city of Jefferson.
It's been motion or second?
Second by all women, fire. Discussion in there? I just, well, we're probably both going to do it. It is really our own single family. There are one, yes, single family residential district. It's not a multi-family district. I think that just got repeated.
That was a typo.
Typo, yeah.
Okay. So everyone clear on that? Okay. So there's motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not in all favor of approval of ordinance number 2-21. Please signify by saying aye or a no. Call us your name. Know if you're opposed.
Order woman, nay.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance number 3-21 and ordinance amending section 270-3 of the Jefferson Municipal Code. All women, nay, please.
Honorable mayor, citizens of Jefferson and council members. City of Jefferson, ordinance number 3-21 and ordinance amending state statutes 270-3 of the Jefferson Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Jefferson has previously enacted an ordinance that regulates the business practices of transient merchants within the legal boundaries of the city of Jefferson. And whereas questions have been raised as to what constitutes a transient merchant. And whereas the common council of the city of Jefferson wishes to resolve these questions, no. Therefore, the common council is hereby ordained as follows. Section 1, state statutes 270-3B is amended to include the following definition. Pop-up retail shop, a retail enterprise that is opened temporarily to take advantage of certain trends or seasonal holiday demand. Products offered for sale generally include handcrafted or art-related items, apparel, toys or other similar merchandise. Non-included are the sale of fermented malt beverages, intoxicating liquor, wine, firearms, bows or other weapons. Section 2, section 270-3B is hereby created to amend the definition of the term transient merchant. Transient merchant, an individual who engages in the retail sale of merchandise at any place within the legal boundaries of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin temporarily and who does not intend to become and does not become a permanent merchant of such place. For purposes of this section, sale of merchandise also includes a sale in which the personal, personal services rendered upon or in connection with the merchandise sale constitutes the greater part of value for the price received. Included in this definition are mobile dessert establishments, mobile food establishments, pop-up retail shops and any other arrangements in which merchandise owned by a third party are sold at a local trade area owned or controlled by a permanent merchant. Section 3, section 270-3D3 is hereby amended to read as follows. At the time the registration is returned, a fee shall be paid by the applicant to the clerk treasurer to cover the cost of processing the registration. For one sale event not to exceed three consecutive days, the initial fee shall be $15 for one event per year only. For all other sale events, the initial fee shall be $50. The common council may adjust said fees on an annual basis. All permits issued under this chapter shall expire on December 31st at 11:59 PM with no proration or reduction of the fee allowed. Section 4, except as stated herein, all other provisions of state statute 270-3 are hereby affirmed and shall be in full force and effect. Section 5, this ordinance shall be